Before we launch into our meeting, I want to inform everyone that we have decided to continue to wear masks at our meeting. And based on the increasing number of cases of the variant and still working on vaccine numbers and whatnot. So we're going to require for the immediate future, continue to wear masks in our meeting. I think this is the safest course of action for us to do. So at this point, will everyone please rise and join me in deciding.
Attention to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item 2.01 is the adoption of the agenda. The focus of tonight's special meeting is on finances of the district. And each of the agenda items relates to a financial aspect of district operations. From capital bonds to the general fund budget to the upcoming replacement levy. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move to adopt the agenda that's presented.
All right, it's been moved to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. All right. The next item on the agenda is 3.01, and this deals with the issuance and sale of more of the general obligation bonds approved by the voters in February of 2019. You'll recall that the total bond measure passed by the voters was in the amount of $112 million. And the second batch of bonds, or the first batch was sold in June 2019. The second batch was sold earlier this year, sorry, in August of 2020, rather. And so the night the district is asking the board to approve the sale of the third and final batch of bonds for the, for the building of a high school, and this is not to exceed $32.5 million. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark. We have guests present. Mark, you can introduce our guests. Thank you. So yeah, we're fortunate enough to have Dave Trager, sir, and Director David Davidson, who you all probably recognize from the previous two bond sales, and Cynthia Weed, who is from KNO Gates, who is our legal counsel behind the draft of the resolution. So I would turn it over to Dave to walk you through the process.
Thank you, Mark. It's a pleasure to be here. And for all who don't, and I have a hard time presenting through nighttime reading. In the far right assumes that you go to the voters with a 150 EPNO levy starting in 2023. The second set assumes if you decide to go for, say, $2.50. I just wanted to show you those two numbers. We also assumed in all the numbers, a conservative 1% growth in your tax base. And you can see, if you look under the total bonds column, which is the second one from the right, that's where we come up with the $1.31 that was referenced back on that page of, of the total impact of the bonds. Total, so for the first one, we're looking at next year about 280 total tax rate, if it's 150, and then 381 if it's 250. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about the bonds, the tax rates, the members, the process. And. Yes.
On the financing team that is involved.
Yes.
municipal advisor, is that the financial advisor that we hired last year?
Yes.
He made the decision to go ahead and keep them again.
Awesome.
At the recommendation of the bond oversector.
Okay.
Glad to see them.
If there are no other questions, I'll introduce Cynthia to talk about the action item type, which is the bond resolution.
Good evening, members of board. Cynthia Weed with KNO Gates. And although this is the final part of this last election resolution, I'm proud to say that I have been working with Ferndale School District for almost more years than I care to admit, but it's been several decades and it's been a pleasure. And I look forward to your next bond endeavor so that we can start this all over again. And again, I'm for the record, I'm Cynthia Wood, KNO Gates, and we do the legal work. The resolution, the action resolution that you have tonight is 31 pages long, but it is double spaced. And I promise you that I'm obviously not going to go through the entire resolution. Fundamentally, this, this resolution is one, the core, the legal core of this is that you're going to borrow money. And in one paragraph, I'm borrowing this 32.5 million and I promise I'm going to pay it back. So if we didn't have to comply with the Securities and Exchange Commission rules and federal tax rules, it would be a really short resolution. So 80% of this really has to do, we have the kind of minutia that are necessary in order to issue your bonds on a tax exempt basis and in order to comply with our Securities and Exchange Commission requirements. But there are several parts of this that we need to emphasize. When I started doing this, people would sell their firm, we sell bonds in the morning. That is, they would go out and take orders for bonds. We would put in numbers and we would drive up here and then you would accept an actual bond purchase. Add all of the interest rates and the principal amounts in that bond resolution. And that practice, frankly, because interest rates several years ago were fairly volatile. And so the practice developed the practice of delegating sale of the bonds. So that in fact, you could choose superintendent, assistant superintendent for business affairs, could actually choose the date of the bond sale and try to time the market so you could get the best interest rate possible. And so as a result, more recently, almost 100% of all of the school districts sell bonds, sell them by using a delegation resolution. And this is one of those. And that's how you've sold your bonds in the past, is you use a specific underwriter, but you choose your sale date and you have a projected sale date in there. But you can change that sale date depending on market conditions, economic conditions, world affairs. All sorts of things can cause a bond sale date to change. This is not an absolute discretionary bond sale date. There are parameters associated with it. Maximum dollar amount of bonds is $32.5 million. Actually, that's legal because this is the last sale we pass. You don't have any legal burdens to all those bonds. There is a requirement that the bonds be able to be called in for redemption in 10 and a half years of the date of issue. And frankly, we would say you could refund them every year, but it's a tradition in the bond market that funds are typically not called before 10 years from the date of issue. But the requirement would at least have the option to refinance your debt within 10 and a half years. The timeframe is that this delegation goes out until December 21st of this year. It is highly likely that it will happen right on that schedule and we won't get anywhere near that December 21st deadline. But if we did, we would have to come back again to the board to extend the overall delegation. The delegation to actually make the final acceptance of the purchase offer is to the superintendent and to your assistant superintendent of finance. So they have the authority to sign the bond purchase contract. That's not to say that will be the last two year because I'm sure that you will hear a report about how the bond sale went. And you will probably be invited to participate or watch the bound order period. It's not extremely exciting. Most exciting thing is you might get donuts, but it's not a very exciting process, bond sale process. It's at least not if it's going well, it's not that exciting. And so finally, there is a maximum interest rate in there. If you read the bond resolution, the maximum interest rate says 4%. We know, because we just heard, it's not going to be anywhere near that 4%, but it's there as a, it's there as a cushion because we know frankly, the interest rates start to spike that high. We'd all be back together talking again about, you know, what's the right structure for the overall bond issue. So with that in mind, this is the last official action that you take with respect to the bond sale, the adoption of this resolution. Everything else after this is more paperwork and signing documents before disposing. Of course, as always, the bond money goes into the county treasurer and the county treasurer is directed to invest it at the highest legal interest rate to earn all the money that you can for your capital projects funding. But assuming he's investing in legal investments, which we do, that interest rate on your investments is not going to be that high right now. So with that in mind, as you might be able to tell, I love talking about bonds and I love having people ask questions about it. But I know I enjoy talking about it more than you enjoy hearing me talk about it. So if, if you have any questions, I'd be delighted to take them.
Other questions in general? Well, then I will accept the motion to approve Resolution Number 8-2021, delegating authority to the superintendent or assistant superintendent for business and support services for a limited time to issue and sell general obligation bonds of the district and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $32,500,000. That's due to the department. That's a mouthful. All right, it's been moved to adopt the Resolution Number 8-2021. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. All right, and any inquiries about the issuance of these bonds can be addressed to Mr. Deepak. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
We'll keep you posted.
Well, the rest of the meeting's really, really good too, so don't.
You know, it's so much, this is the first in-person meeting I've attended since March 17th of 2020. It's like, whoa. Really, it's a pleasure. I, as I've said, it's a real pleasure to be here and I don't have to worry about the technology. Zoom working or WebEx or something else. All you have to do is make sure your car gets here on time and you can attend the meeting.
Well, thank you for tracking up. To your respects, we appreciate it.
Good to see you, Cynthia. Thanks.
Pleasant drive.
Thank you. And thank you for the big news. 16 years instead of 20 is a big deal. The $1.31 instead of, that's a big deal. Jackson, we're going to have to write a story about this.
It's kind of what the, if it had been the $1.31 instead of 20 years, what that would have cost first, the $1.31. I'm getting my numbers right for the 16. That difference is.
Significant age, significant.
We can, I can help with the user release about it. Time it after we price the bonds, so everything's final, final.
Yeah, we'll wait. It's not done yet, but when it, once it is, I think it will be a good news story. And I'll make sure Jackson connects with you, Dave. Thanks.
Thank you both.
The rest of your meeting will be interesting because you got, you know, levy discussion. And we're looking forward to.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is 4.01, a report on and discussion of the 21-22 budget and plans for use of the federal SIR fund. And reminder, DSSER, SIR, state elementary and secondary school emergency. These funds have been allocated to us on a one basis by the federal government to help us, help our students get through and recover from the pandemic. Leave this discussion, I'm going to turn it over to our assistant superintendent, Mark Deepak. Thank you. So this will pick off, so the fan favorite, the F-195. 226 pages of pure budget excitement. So. Because I can see that, right?
You can see this, yes.
Okay. So the the F-195, as you recall, is the official required state format for the budget. So this is the certification page. And we've got 226 pages of not particularly user-friendly or helpful information that, but this is the actual required format for the, for the budget. So the version that we are used to working with is the citizens budget. And you have actually in board docs today about what time, Jackson, brief, Mark?
Yeah, at some point this afternoon.
Or so, we actually updated the board docs with new version of the documents, most of which that we're going to talk about. Right, so it's hard to see on the screen, you can actually pull this up on your, on your board box. And I am going to hit just a few highlights of the budget this year, since we've talked about a lot of things in the past. So as you recall, the budget is divided into different funds, right? So there, we've got the general fund, associated student body debt service, capital projects and transportation vehicle. And those are all separate buckets that are used for specific purposes. So the general fund is what we'll be spending pretty much all of our time tonight talking about, unless you have questions about the others. But that is the operating budget for the school district. That's where we paid salaries, we paid light bills, we paid for the books, the kind of the normal day-to-day operations. Associated Student Body Fund is exactly that. It pays for student clubs and activities and is directed by students with staff oversight. The debt service fund is actually where we pay, we use those monies to actually, that's where the tax revenue comes in to pay for the bonds. So the bond revenue, when we sell the bonds, actually comes into the capital projects fund that's used to build the new school. And the, and the bond project, the debt service fund is where the tax money actually comes to make the debt service payments. And then transportation vehicle fund is used for buses. That's a pretty limited use fund. And those are the expenditure budgets. So when you next month or present the resolution to adopt the budget, these will be the appropriation numbers that you'll see in the resolution for each of the funds. We're pretty darn close, depending on what happens tonight and, and going forward. So just a general overview of our beginning fund balance, which is still at this point an estimate because we have a couple of months left in the year. Our revenue forecast, we're budgeting for just under $75 million worth of revenue this year. And that is very good aim right here. And $80 million worth of expenditures, which your quick math says, well, that's about $5 million as of a deficit. So we're actually budgeting to use $5 million of fund balance this year. So the 13 million that we're forecasting to end the year with, we're expecting that we're going to dip into that for, for $5 million. I don't think it will actually decrease by $5 million because we are budgeting with some capacity for some increased expenditures and hedging against enrollment again. So if our enrollment numbers come in and, and things don't go, worst case scenario, we'll probably won't spend quite that much money, but that's the, that's the plan at this point going forward. So enrollment, which we've talked about before a little bit, is, is down from last year's budget. But it is up from last year's actual. So we are, last year we budgeted for 4,415 students. Our actual June enrollment was 4120. So we were down considerably last year from where our budget was. So we're expecting a little bit of a bounce back this year from, than this year being next school year compared to what the actual was. But we're not expecting it to be full back to where we were the year before. So if we are, great, that's fantastic. But we're being a little conservative on that one, but optimistic at the same time. So we're, we're down, but up in the enrollment. And then, so we can make this really small, so it's hard to see. Are the big differences this year in terms of revenue? Because you can see last year, so the way this document works, you can see the 2021 budget on the left-hand side versus the 21-22 budget on the right-hand side. And you can pretty quickly identify the areas that there's a significant change. And one is the levy, right? Because we've got the full year worth of levy this year versus, versus how. And then federal, right? So our federal is up a lot because of the SIR. Right, so that's a huge increase in, in our revenue. So we're up from just under 68 to just under 75 in revenue this year. And a couple of detailed pages there. So how are we spending the money? That's the, the next big question.
Mark, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the 2021 to, or 2020 to 2021 budget, with the levy being the $5 million, the 7.4%. In 2020, weren't we collecting at the two, or the higher rate before? I don't understand why it's going up there, I guess.
The dollar amount?
The, the dollar amount and the percentage.
Okay, it represents a larger percentage of the total.
Yes.
So the, the, the $5 million was 7.4% of $67,883.
Right, but in, in the calendar year of 2020, from January to December, didn't we have our levy from before that was at a higher rate than it is now?
No. What was that, a dollar? Did we have a?
No, that's, I'm trying to.
Yes, we did raise it to 217.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or a year.
So in.
You're right.
Half a year.
And yeah, the first half of that year would have been the 217 and we went to $1.50.
But this is just the budget. This is the budget, not the actual. So this did not include the second half of the year. It didn't include the, the 2021 levy.
Well, when we were budgeting for 2021, we didn't have the levies, so we couldn't budget that money.
So Melinda, when you were budgeting, your budget to budget, and what actually happened is somewhere else.
Because, because the levy hadn't passed, we couldn't expect that money. So we had to put the, now, we had to put the budget base on not having the levy.
Okay, I get that. Okay, I got that.
That was your budget, not what really happened.
Okay.
Okay.
So it was taking the $2.17 that we had in the calendar year of 2020 and a zero for 2021. Because nothing has passed that time.
Right. We're not legally.
But then in our 2021, 2021 to 2022, we're doing the $1.50 for.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly. Because we're not legally allowed to budget for levy that hasn't been authorized by the board. So that's, yeah. And that's a really good point that Linda made that, so all the budget comparisons are budget to budget because we're still midway through the year, right? The year won't actually, and it won't, we won't close the books until October. So we've got to do a comparison over last year's budget to this year's budget. So it's, yeah, actually, we really don't.
That's confusing since the actual was quite a bit different.
Yes. Yes. So in, again, in, in expenditures by major programs, you can see that kind of minor increases from last year to this, with the exception again of federal. So we've got a large bump in federal. Rest of the, of the, of the programs are just kind of smaller, smaller increases from year over year. And then, and by our major activity, yeah, it's the, you can see the increases. You know, you're, you're about 2.7 million up in teaching. You are, we're going up about one and a half in teaching support. Operations is up just under a million. Administration is. Operations is up just under a million. Administration is up, you know, pretty small, hundred seventy-five thousand or so. And then the principals are up about a million, but that is largely a program change. So we've added back the the assistant principal of the high school that that were reduced, and we've added deans at the at the middle school or at the elementary, I'm sorry. So there was an increase in in the way we account for that versus last year, they were accounted for or the year before last, actually, they were accounted for in teaching support versus principal office. So there's a bit of a shift from one budget category to another.
So before we made the levy cuts, the, bringing our elementary principals, we had a full-time certificated person who was called a school support specialist. We had a para educator that was called a PBIS para. We tried to get away from that, but they basically were. And we had cross-techs who were called Ferndale, I mean, family and community coordinators. And those people were all listed in different categories. We were, we redesigned the model, and now we're going to have a certificated person in each elementary school. One certificated person paid on a teacher's salary schedule. Did we give them extra days?
For the MTSS best and not for the T.
No, so they just are paid on a teacher's salary schedule. So their location on the budget has changed to administration, whereas they used to be teacher support. Does that make sense? And and that one person is going to absorb the work of those other people. Okay?
So if that's being moved from, it wasn't teaching support, but teaching support is still going up by one and a half million, that means we're really growing our teaching.
We're, we're putting in a lot of teaching support, and I'm sure Mark will get to that, but a lot of that is S R funds, and it's temporary teachers. Very intentional plan for sunsetting that, you know, of coming in, helping kids get back on track, developing and implementing the MTSS, following implementation science, and sunsetting it at the end of three years. So yes, there is a lot of teacher support.
Yeah, I'm breaking it down a little differently. And you can see where the where the breakdown is on you know, certificated salaries are are increased by fair amount, quite a bit, because we've had a lot of of certificate staff. Like Linda mentioned just a minute ago, we'll cover that here in the, where we break down the S R plan. Classified salaries are up a little bit, not a ton. Benefits again as well. Supplies are pretty flat. The big difference is the purchase services. And that's kind of a, there's three major reasons for that. One, it was very, we cut a lot last year out of budget, so we're restoring some of those purchase services. There's been some increases in costs with, you know, insurance rates have gone up dramatically as as one example. And typically, when we budget some capacity for expenditures and things that happen throughout the year, we cut last year, we cut all the the most of the purchase services out of the capacity in the budget last year. So we've added that piece back in. So that's kind of added an inflationary factor to the to that number. So I would expect that would be one area that we most likely will understand as we were talking about the the five million dollars for planning to dip into fund balance. Some of that is going in here as as a budget capacity. And then looking at the at the staffing, the top chart, left-hand side shows the state-funded staff unit. So those are the, what we call the formula staff. So based on our enrollment, the 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 allocation model from the states is these are the the categories we're allocated staff, and these are the number of staff that we are basically that they're funding us for. Now, remember, they're not funding actually dollar for dollar, they're funding at the state average for each of those positions at this number of F T E. So if you skip to the far right of that chart, you can see the actual number of each of those categories of people that we employ. And then the middle shows you the the local or grant-funded folks in those categories. So when you look at the classified staff, for instance, we talk about this quite often. The state does not fund a lot of classified staff, and yet we employ quite a few. So those folks are coming from grants and local funding.
It's actually more people than that, since that's
It's a lot more people than that because of most of those folks are are part-time. Exactly. And then down below, you get a year-over-year comparison based on classified and and certificated staff. So you can see that we have added back, at least temporarily, just about everybody that we laid off as a result of last year's budget cuts for the levy. So questions about any of that before we take a look at the S R plan? Just a quick question. Yeah, so we've gotten our stepping back to where we were prior to the failure of the levy. Did I miss anything? No, it's just, we've just about restored everybody that that not everybody, but we've added the same number of F T E that we were. So add a dollar fifty.
But a lot of that's because we have the S R.
Yeah, it's the So this is a one-year we get people becomes the S R.
Three years.
Three years to use them, right?
Yes, okay. So we, yes.
Kind of, there's a question on the S R. When those people are hired, in their contracts, they'll know that they're being funded from S R and that this is a three-year type of thing, right? I mean, at the end of three years, when it said, oh, we don't need this position anymore.
Well, actually, it's also an account, but the people we've hired into these, some of these special positions are veteran teachers. So they will keep their jobs. In fact, they will go back to their jobs. The people we're hiring to hiring to fill in, backfill for them, know that they're on a non-continuing contract. But but also, if you were a bit of a betting person, in in three years, if you're a good employee, there's enough turnover that, you know.
And if the voters.
And if the voters approve the levies, a lot of those will keep, but but it isn't necessarily that S R positions, because it was very important to us to get veteran staff who, you know, leaders take those jobs. They could step out, take this leadership role, step back. So, but there's been a very careful accounting, make sure that we have enough spots. Everybody knows what their contract status is.
It seems like, though, if we did not get ourselves worked back up to like the equivalent of whatever the two-dollar fifty levy that we're not on right now, then at the end of the three years, when that S R funds is done, are we just kind of postponing? Or would there be another RIF situation?
No, no. But we would, we would lose, no, because the positions we're hiring out of the S R money, we're hiring them as three-year positions. When Mark said that we put that, he's talking strictly in numbers.
Right.
He's not, we have not restored all the positions we had before.
Oh, no. I know, I know that many of those people who were RIF last year have moved on to other.
No, no, it's not, I'm not even saying that. We we created some new positions. We haven't filled all the positions that we had before the levy. He says the numbers are the same. That's because we've created these temporary S R positions. But we still have a number of things that we had before, when we had a bigger levy that we don't have. Okay, and we haven't put those back because those are continually things. And what we heard from you and what we believe to be true is, if you take this short-term money, don't use it for something where you're going to set an expectation that you can't keep the money. So that was a little, to say we filled all the positions was a little bit misleading. We have as many people. Right? But that's because of that.
I, I think the other thing we have to be cautious within, if it's possible, Mark, to flip back to your budgets. And I, I don't know if it's possible to do this, but if you go back to the twenty-twenty-one versus twenty-one-twenty-two, which is there. Or actually, probably where the money's coming from. I mean, both were, but as I look at that and go, okay, if I'm looking at that from a a general public person who hasn't been looking at these numbers and hearing about S R and all that, it's like, you get, your budget went up and now you want more money?
Exactly. They're in line.
And I'm wondering, is there a way of taking that federal and splitting it so that there, you know, the one line is ongoing and one is one-time-only money or or something, just to help split that up? Because, you know, like I said, from the person who isn't hearing this over and over and over, which we know that, you know, people don't get it the first time, you know, to me, that looks like, why do you need more of my money? It looks like you're getting plenty.
The government's stepping up, the federal government's taking care of it, shouldn't be local.
Yeah, I think that that somehow, that's the message we need to start getting across because, you know, we've heard it before, and we haven't had a big jump like that, you know. I think that's going to be our our nemesis as far as if we're asking to go from the one fifty to two fifty.
Yeah, I think that's, we can definitely split that out, because that's, it's called out. You know, that's, we did it on the breakdown, but it's, nobody's going to look at the breakdown.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. We can, we can work on that. Creating another subcategory of federal. You indicate with the parentheses that it's three-year money or something like that, other than just justify as S R, but also
Yes.
parentheses time limited or something to that.
We only get it once, but we get three years to spend. Like making it clear that if we're saying we have to spend it in three years, not that we're going to be getting this amount every year for three years.
We will take a stab at that. So speaking of S R and the position, so John just handed a sheet out. Because this was not on the, not on the board dots, but I think you've seen a version of this before. Something similar to it. So the S R, the S R plan, we've broken it down by our our plan for the three years. So left-hand, two columns or the left-hand column, I guess, is the, is the what it is that we're viewing. And then the two C and D up here anyway, are the twenty-one-twenty-two, and then the next two, twenty-two-twenty-three, and then twenty-three-twenty-four. And then the total dollar amount for that line item on the right-hand side. So the first, first line item is the elementary E L A adoption and professional development that you approve. I'm trying to think of the name of it, it slipped in me.
American Reading Company.
American Reading Company, that everybody is very excited about. K twelve math is coming year two because that's, it's at various stages along the the way, depending on what grade you're in. So that's a intention here to, the teacher laptop replacement will probably end up being spread over a couple of years because of the chip shortage. It's going to be probably a little problematic to actually get enough of those in time to do a one-year. In addition that we had committed to staff, that we're going to allow them to participate in the selection of the devices. So that's going to take us a little longer to make sure that we honor that commitment as well. The S L P is a kind of a catch-up strategy, as well as just to take advantage of opportunity. We have a staff member that is is an S L P currently, that's retiring mid-year. It's a challenging position to fill, and we need some additional supports for for the kids that that need a little extra support next year. So we are hiring the person's replacement at the beginning of the year in anticipation of their retirement mid-year. So we have half a year worth of extra support as an S L P, and that's a one-year, one-time deal.
And S L P is speech and language.
Yes. Yes, it is. And then we've got two years' worth of additional nursing support since we're still going through the the pandemic. And then as well, some additional para educator support hours for next year to provide additional support because of the COVID protocols. Some additional supervision for lunchtime and contact tracing and some other things that may need to take place because of the rules that are associated with coming back to school in the in the pandemic.
Is that six hours per building per day?
Yes, yes. So we have an additional para educator at every building. At every elementary building.
No, everyone.
That numbers are on that, because that should be ten.
Not it, not it each and not it.
Okay. So then the the M T S S, the equity-based multi-tiered system supports implementation coordinator at each, each of the buildings for three years. And I will let one of my esteemed colleagues explain that a little bit more, as well as the professional development associated with that and the tier-two intervention co-teaching model. Linda explained a little.
Talk some about this, and and this is really something that I hope at some point here, very near future, we can provide you with a a study session or some time to talk to you more about M T S S and and what we're doing. It's very exciting. If you want, we're, we're reading a couple of books, and we'd be glad to provide them to you, but I, you know, I also more than willing and telling today and I can do a a short presentation. But basically, this, this coincides with bringing our students and making sure that we bring them up to up to where they need to be after the pandemic. But it's also was coming along anyway. It's just the right way to do business. So it's basically taking all of our resources and looking at kids as as whole people, not as a behavior problem and a reading problem or an eyesight problem, and looking at all of the resources that we have and developing a, like it says, a multi-tiered system of support that says we're going to have multi-disciplinary teams that go in and and are looking at the needs of kids and and addressing those needs. uh the needs of kids and um and addressing those needs for their social and emotional and getting out of those silos. And so the M T S S teams are really going to be helping to retool the resources that we already have. Teachers a different way of thinking about including kids. You know, the old motto is I'm going to teach my class and if you don't fit into it, um, I'm going to send you somewhere. And it's really how do we um, how do we create a classroom where all kids can be successful? What do you want to add?
And it's just, we really are looking at, we talked about the different tiers in one of our previous meetings and really strengthening that tier one instruction. So it's inclusive of all of our learners. So making sure that what we're offering our students is meeting their needs. And it's based on their strengths, such a strength based model where we're identifying those strengths, building of capacity within our classrooms. And then if additional supports, we're being very intentional about how, when, why. Those are happening. So it's a really exciting thing.
It is, and I I've been reading the lot while I was traveling, between the university design for learning, and I know and I and the base just got me very excited about sort of it. So implementation science says, if you're trying to retool your system and you're very intentional about it and you provide people with the tools and you have someone who's focused on it and that you can implement a change in a system, you can get eighty percent of the way there in three years. If you, and I've implemented a lot of things for the last forty seven years. You hope it works, you tell people about it, you, and so we have this one time money. We, this is a way to address a whole lot of the gaps in our system. We're we're very intentionally um hiring veteran people who can help, who've already proven that they're good at this kind of thing to help move this whole system and and making it not if you want or if you're good at it or if your principal believes in it and taking a system approach to it. So that's where a big chunk of the money goes. That's the M T S S coordinators. Uh, and we have met them and you met them when you were at our retreat and they're very excited about this work. The interventions are are more people who are going to be specifically in the trenches with kids who missed significant skills while they were on the pandemic. You know, that are going to be within the classroom. We're, you know, they're going to be looking at those kids and making sure that we can help catch them up. And so like at the high school, there's one in maths and science and one in the social side of, I mean, English Language Arts, social studies side of things. But they have a, they're more direct services to kids that are catch up services. Is that how you would?
Absolutely. At the elementary school, it's going to be focused on math and it's going to be with a um intentional building line schedule where they're seeing whole groups of students, but then also targeting specific skills based on needs.
Because we already have math and final services in in dark, we haven't had it in that. So the M T S S coordinators a little bit less direct service to kids, a little bit more retooling of the system, providing professional development, providing systems that can then keep operating, the interventionist down with the kids, making sure that they get what they need to get caught up. Does that make that distinction make sense?
And I have a question. You were saying that if you have if you have somebody that's really focused on implementation and, you know, eighty percent, you can get there eighty percent of the way with that person doing, but then you also have people who are resistant and want the old way. So also part of intervention, or I'm sorry, implementation, isn't that kind of phasing out the old way?
Yes.
So is there a plan for?
All of that is part of what?
For phasing that out. So people can't say, well, I like the old way and I'm just sending to the research firm while I deal with restaurant.
Right. All, and that's why it's a across, everyone's involved, getting the buy in that because it'll be part of the evaluation process. It will be part of it'll just be part of how we do business so that um and when I say we've implemented things poorly, there there have been some benefits, but when we decided our elementary schools just needed more support, we came up with a model of hiring a strong teacher to be a school support specialist to be for help with um instructional leadership, help the principal do a lot of things. And we gave one to each elementary school and we said, so forth. You know, and everybody used those people differently. We did not get a, you know, good things happened. I'm not saying we did, but it was a wild flower flower approach. You know, it wasn't cultivating kind of a a system where everybody was um using them to move a whole system. Uh, we're we're setting up structures right now for how we're not going to let that happen. And when just even in those first two days, when one principal said, well, I'm going to use my M T S S person to do this, everybody went, no. That becomes an expectation that we can't, no, that's not. And so we're, we've got this whole system of checks and balances in place to move the entire system. So that with one person leaves, if I leave or Kelly leaves or Mark leaves or whatever, that the whole thing isn't going to revert back.
And that different schools will operate in the same sort.
And they're in the, yeah, always room for creativity and whatever, but the M T S S coordinators are not going to be, what they do is not going to be left to the discretion of individual staffs.
You mentioned the implementation, how various people go through different stages, that there are different rates or and their readiness experience. We're also working, and we spent those first two days also talking about implementation science and the very state mutation. So working with our M T S S coordinators also as they're working with our staff to recognize and acknowledge, okay, this is where you are and this is what we need to get you to that next step. So they'll also help us in that process um get buy in and support our staff and their training.
And the first two words are equity focused or the first hyphenated adjective, equity focused M T S S. So the goal is we're going to close some gaps that have existed in all over our by by systems. Data collection system.
Any questions, concerns, comments about the um Esser plan? And this is folded into the into the budget. All these are building.
Do the Esser funds then go into our fund.
Down to the general fund.
General fund for three and we just pull from that for three years.
Yep.
And they disappear.
And they go away.
I mean, we spent.
We spent a month, yeah.
And 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 so that, ah, did you have a question?
I have.
Yeah.
So the three year total off of this sheet is nine point three million, but then the federal special purpose for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, it's like eight million. So are we using some other funds to kind of supplement or?
No, this is, it's a three year continuum.
Yeah, but we get that.
There are three parts of Esser. The first part we got
Seven hundred ninety.
Seven hundred ninety, which actually spent that.
Yep.
The second part was about two million and the third part is about seven million. This is what it adds, this part two and three add up.
Well, this is generally where it's going into that fund balance. If we could have this designated category, just like some of the other stuff that we have in there. That'd be helpful just to help others understand it, if not even ourselves.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a grant. Um, so we claim against it. So I don't actually have the money in the bank. We actually you have to pay claims to them and then get reimbursed for.
So at the end of that budget and at this budget and at the Esser budget, you have to do a report of some kind, how the funds were used and has it made a difference, like you're saying, your your implementation? And what changes for me or what what it helped, you know, this to you?
I I don't think that kind of accountability is built into the federal funds. We have to tell them how we're using it. But Jesse, that kind of accountability is built into your policies. So that's where the accountability is.
I would really like to see a report.
Well, I think you will see a series of reports on how, and and I hope we don't wait, I'm still using wait, but I hope we don't wait until the end of the three years, but uh data is a big part of what we're planning. And I will just say, having talked to other superintendents in the state and about, I am really proud of our Esser plan. I think we have been extremely thoughtful. Um, it meets the intent of both addressing, well, it meets the intent of more values, but equity and closing gaps and doing whatever. It meets the intent of the money of catching kids up, but it also um follow, I mean, it it's just such best practice. Yeah, I mean, I think it's some of the best work I've been here as far as really thoughtfully planning how to use the money. So I'm, I feel proud of it.
Is there a list already of the professional development that is going to take place or?
Well, we're already, we we've already started some of that with book studies and um and one of the things that is Kelly and Faye and I are planning these days in August. Um, one of, we're, we're starting to list out what are the expectations we have for principals throughout the year. And one of them is to submit a professional development um calendar of what's what they're going to do, but they're going to work on it together. So that if you don't get, if you're a Cascadia, you get this, and if you're a Chester, you get this. And so that's coming. But um some of it will be developed along the way and I'm sure we, it'll be published so that you'll you'll know.
Well, um, I'd like to put in my word for generational trauma. Uh, maybe some type of uh training in that. And that round, so, you know, so it's not just me speaking it that everybody else will understand what it's about and that it is history, of course.
And and I I read part of the article you sent and I'll read the rest of it. And I think that's a good point and and part of the training will be um trauma informed practice, trauma informed practices, but um the, and some of our folks, we're going to have to figure out how to how to catch everybody up because some of our folks have been trained in um trauma informed care that doesn't include generational trauma. Some have not. And so, you know, that, but that's always a part of having to keep up with. But yeah, that that was good.
Can I just add one other piece? Part of us collecting the Esser funds is the requirement of creating our academic and student wellbeing recovery plan. And that plan includes several phases. So at this point, we're in phase one, which was the initial plan. Um, but phase two and three involve, for instance, phase two, which comes in November, includes review and analysis of student data for the implementation strategies and interventions from phase one. And and it includes adjustments to those strategies um based on effectiveness um and the data, as well as phase three is continuous improvements um based on the cycle of implementation. So they're embedded within this plan. There are some of those checks and balances that we reference.
Good. Is the data in November like your starting point date? Okay, they're not expecting you to have.
But yes, what we collected, this is what it looked like.
That's the difference.
Yes, yeah. I think that's probably more of the phase three, where we're continuing that cycle of improvement.
Yeah, thanks.
One more, next um budget item. Um, so the 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 M SOC disclosure is a fairly new um fairly new item um in terms of of budget. And basically, if you read the little bottom part right here, it down here, it says, we are legally required to share with you this document. So we have to uh review the uh the M SOC. Sorry, I said Esser. Um, and that's from the brain. So it's the M SOC disclosure. So the top part of this, um, the five million seven hundred and one thousand dollars is the amount the state is allocating via formula, the 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 uh their allocation model um is is driving that much money based again on our enrollment and our staff. Um, the section down below is how much we actually have budgeted um to spend um in M SOCs, which again are material supplies and other costs. It's our non employee related expenditures. So we are planning to spend uh five point eight million dollars more in um M SOCs than what we're allocated allocated by the state. And if we were not, if that top number were actually larger than the bottom number, we would have to actually provide an explanation as to how we were going to use those funds to benefit students. So yeah, this is a a new relative to the last few years. Item and it is um, we're legally required to share that information. So uh we have not ever been in a situation where um that top number has been larger than the bottom. So if there's any questions about that, it's a checkbox. Um, so you'll see this again on the at the budget period. So what you have got in front of you right now, and I just handed out, is your budget. It's the board's B R C. So the Budget Responsibility Center, it's the board's budget um for the upcoming year. And basically, we took last year's um or the year before, rolled it forward. So if you would like to make any adjustments or changes, I'm having to take that back and um make those. The year before last is kind of the first year that you actually went through the process of identifying a budget and have gone through the process. Uh, we've been providing the the reports monthly at your meetings to to see how you're doing on a budget. Since last year was kind of a weird year and we didn't actually get to test whether or not this was a very good budget or whether it wasn't. Um, we kind of just assumed we'd be rolling it forward, but we are happy to make any um adjustments or changes that you would like to see.
Is the um the firm helping with hiring the superintendent in our budget or is that in a different part?
Uh, that is, I believe, in your budget.
Let's be here then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be contracted services, but I think.
It would be a contract service.
That needs to be.
Yeah, because we have not only that, not only their contracts, but also associated kinds of expenses.
Right, and the what's the membership, what's the um membership dues category for four thousand? What's all that into that before?
That, I don't know that anything did. I think that was a um case. I think there was some interest in uh my memory serves, there was some interest in joining some other um associations that may be of benefit to the for you all to.
I don't see any um travel budget.
Well, there's conference budget.
Yeah, the conference.
This conference registration, that doesn't really to me cover hotel.
Oh, no, you know what? We didn't put that back after it was cut last year.
Because Jesse, you're going, you haven't been yet. When are you going to a conference?
August.
And I thought there used to be a place for us to co. And I thought there used to be a place for us to code that. Like hotel and travel.
Yeah, we'll add a travel. That should definitely be in there. So add superintendent search and to contracted services.
And.
Travel.
But things like um.
That's not quite the whole W A S, the membership, is it? Isn't it more?
No, that's not the whole W A S, the membership and conference. Um, the conference registration and the expenses for the. Conference don't fit in here anywhere. I think we should work rework this.
Yep.
And what would fall into general supply? Six thousand dollars in general supply. They're very.
But it, that's that probably not it.
Yeah.
Some of that could go into travel.
It could definitely be transferred.
Computers are the biggest.
Yeah.
Computers, cell phones that we've supplied sometimes.
I'd like to.
Have you spent anything like that on W A S supplies?
Um, not this year.
Well. Anything, what was your question? Have we spent anything out of it?
Like six thousand have we spent?
No. We've bought um new names.
But when you, when you started, I mean, she said, is this a district laptop?
This is not a district laptop, no. In fact, my district laptop.
Well, and the question goes back to district laptops, and I know a lot of us turned it back in when we were at the beginning of the pandemic. Um, but I know that my insurance people off on the business side have said. It's a little scary using your business laptop, because if something happens and they say, okay, we need all that, use that here.
Yeah.
Then all of a sudden, I'm without my work laptop, and that's not a good place for me to be. I mean, it's worked with the pandemic.
I have thought about that. We started back up and I'm traveling and stuff again.
Mark and I work on this budget and bring it back to you next week.
Sure.
Right, I think we should think this through a little bit.
I I appreciate that the W A S, the law digest and policy updates are thrown out in here, because I think those are very important for us to have.
When laws change, that they can update us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And they certainly do it more effectively than if we were doing it trying to do it ourselves.
Yeah. And what would come out of the board committees and task force amount? I mean. But what was come out of here to support them? Not enough to pay for staffing.
No, and if we've taken money out of here, it was a dinner.
Okay.
If. Not a lot. And of course, things can be moved within the category. So sometimes we put, you know, we we don't need to worry too much about that. But I I thought our W A S that membership was closer to thirteen thousand.
And and I remember the conversation, we had some back and forth about that with, and Holly was involved, I think. And she was like splitting it out between another budget and this budget, but I think it should all.
I should, I think it should be reflected more accurately.
Yeah.
And and I think um, and we used to have, I thought there was something here for um. Board of sponsored community event. You know, um, and maybe, maybe that's where I've taken it out in the past for. Or Tammy did for general supplies. Remember, we were gonna have that young parent night? We did have that young parent night, it's just so young.
Young parent. Was a wild success.
Outreach, right?
Yeah, it's called linkages in the book, but. Um, well, and if I think about when the um street fair happened. That's right, we we paid. Or, but that's why it used to say something like events, we pay the. For the street fair. Or there used, you guys used to have um brochures. I think that you should get back to or something to hand out. And we paid for that here um. And then I think the conference registration, we had up, because we talked about possibly. Going to a national conference on a rotating basis, which.
Well, I looked at the last year, Roger was here, he said to me, every year, somebody should go to the national. Well, I I kind of. An F D A conference, and it's like, now you're saying that?
I mean, never encouraged. I I kind of think that that isn't an unreasonable thing, because you know. Wanting you a year should go.
Definitely, I don't know what the registration. But I don't.
Well, the registration isn't, um, it's the travel.
Yeah, the travel is. Yeah.
I think also as volunteers on the board, the time away of. Whoever goes, taking that out of their vacation or their salary time, when we're already doing other conference things too, it's like. It sounds great, but it's also, I don't want to spend all my vacation.
Yeah, I understand.
And then that gets into, well, who then do you have that wants to run for school board and be on the board? But I, I think it's important to have people that. Um, were in the game, you know, as board members, that they have children that they're. You know, close to what happens in the school district, but if it gets to the point that. The only people that can go to the multiple conferences currently are people who are retired or. I don't know.
There was a conversation at one point, um, I know that Mary Jo was about child. Kids, some school boards get a stipend for each movement they go to. Children, you need to stipend to help pay for child. We've never gone that route, but I I think the idea about. Not necessarily a stipend for someone like me, but a stipend for someone who does have children and has to pass them a better arrangement. Um, makes absolute sense.
I think that that would be something I'd like to discuss at a future time, and maybe if we discuss it, that it. Because there's, one of the amendments of the U S Constitution is that Congress cannot vote a race in for themselves. And you could kind of think of it in that same sort of way that, you know, we think about that of having stipends available, but it doesn't go into effect until after a next election. Because I think it's something to think about for. The future of the board and the makeup of the board. Not just, Melinda doesn't want to take her P T O, so I want a stipend type of thing. I think it's something to think about, and doesn't have to be tonight, but for this budget.
We can talk about that.
Yeah, we did.
Um, implementing the stipend. For anyone newly elected.
I think it came up when we were going over the. Old C governments, because there was one in there.
Yeah.
Conversation came up as part of that.
Hey, making some notes.
Okay, move on to the next. Okay, so F one ninety five. Which is the multi-year forecast. So enrollment, um, we made a few assumptions on this. Now, remember, this was, the the whole reason this came to be. Um, was to demonstrate um to the state that. If we continued on the path we were going as a state, we were gonna end up with a significant financial problem in the in the schools. So it has. Continued on, so it's it's something that didn't go away, um, and it's actually come become kind of a little bit of a. Kind of a tiger of itself, so um for, I just highlighted a couple of of items, a couple of our assumptions and then. Kind of looked at, the first column, the left-hand side is the current year's budget, so not the current budget, so twenty one to. Um, budget, and then the next three years. So for enrollment, um, we're twenty three forty five is our our budget enrollment for this year. Forty three forty five, yeah, sorry. Um, so the uh next two years, we're. Uh, uh, planning for a, or budgeting guessing at this point, um, a seventy five student increase each year. So next year, we assume we're gonna get another seventy five students back. Year after we open a new school, we expect we're gonna get another resurgence of students. Um, and then the the final year, we just left flat, because. That's kind of been our trend, so we're expecting a little bit of a. A growth compared to where we were um this past year over the course of the next three. So that's our one assumption. The local taxes, now this is, and I know we're, this is kind of a bit of a foreshadowing into the levy conversation that we're getting into next. Um, we basically took uh and did a one percent increase in levy revenue. So we assumed nothing other than the assessed value would increase by one percent. Which is the same assumption we make on the on the bond chart. If it continues going like it is, we know that's gonna go up considerably more than one percent. Um, and I think in the next year, I think that's reasonable to think that, but in terms of building this forecast. That was our assumption that that we used. We use the forecast, the current forecast for I P D. Um, which the implicit price deflator, um, that the state is using for salary increases and in terms of building. Um, the allocation model increases um for revenue. So the revenue is is going up by, you know, roughly one and a half, two percent um each of the next years. And again, these are just assumptions that we made based on um developing a developing a model. Our expenditures, um, we adjusted. In order to make the four percent. Uh, fund balance requirement. So in order to kind of take our our current funding, starting fund balance. Our revenue forecast from this, our expenditure forecast from this, we basically adjusted. Um, so you see the expenditures actually go down, um, and we do that in order to maintain that that minimum fund balance. Um, requirement in your policy. So we're planning, you know, this year, like we spoke to to uh use five million dollars of fund balance. Next year, it'd be two point four year after one point two, and then after that, we're basically into a balance. Given these assumptions. Right? So um, and our ending fund balance then, um, basically is the four percent plus the other. Kind of mandatory carryover items. So the, instead of just letting this run wild and ending with huge deficits, um, like we did last year. And got some criticism, we went the other way this year, and basically said, okay, what would this look like given these kind of parameters? And what adjustments would we have to make to kind of keep um status quo? Given those assumptions, makes sense? Okay. So the green part, I would like to kind of call your attention to here, and you're gonna see these numbers again, but those are the the basically the short calls. Um, given the the one, the levy revenue forecast with just the one percent. Um, just the one percent growth.
And our percent number, I'm thinking it's. Is that? Two million, that second number?
You're reading that correct. Okay, so. That's the end of uh. Budget.
So that feels sort of like a shell game. I I guess it's like. We try, I I understand. The ship and thought process. But I'm thinking, well, if we really are. Then what's going away? I mean, because other costs are gonna go up, so 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 my brain is sort of like.
The 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 point is, so there's two ways, in in my mind, there's two ways to look at this, there's two ways to approach this. Either, what does it look like if we don't do anything? Right, which is what we did before, and we ended up with a, you know, twenty million dollar deficit for years.
But that showed what would happen if the state at that low.
Yes, right, so if we continue on with the path we're on, that's what's gonna happen. And that's, that's, that's one way to approach it. The other way to approach it is, okay, what's probably a little more uh, in in given the certain assumptions, right? The revenue kind of, I think those are reasonable revenue assumptions, with the exception of the of the levy, um, which we'll get here in a minute. You're gonna have to make some expenditure reductions. Right, and and what those are, that's a conversation we're gonna have, but we're gonna have to make some cuts. So you're gonna be able to look at that and say, okay, we're, if we're budgeting eighty million in expenditures. We gotta cut two million next year, we gotta cut two million the year after that. And we need to cut another, you know, almost a million the year after that, and that's kind of the steady progression of what's gonna have to happen. If you don't do something different. Right, so you're either gonna have a big deficit, or you're gonna make some cuts in order to make things work, so it's just a different. Approach to the same thing, and it's, it's, I'm happy to do it either way. This document is is kind of a hassle, it's not the easiest thing to work with in the world, I'm happy to change it, I'm honest, it's just a matter of. I don't, I don't know really what good it is. Right, I mean, we're having a conversation around what does the future look like? You know, multiple years down the road, but we're having those conversations anyway. So I don't know that this necessarily really. informs our conversation, although that highlighted green number is gonna tie into our conversation here in just a minute. Which I'm really very excited about.
Part of, part of the challenge with that. Being required to have this and being required to have those numbers out there. Is, again, you know, we look at them, we work, you know, you work with them, you can explain to us, we have a. One-on-one, you know. And conversation. But you put that out there as part of the public record, because you're required to. And I, as the general public, who, you know. Only has a little bit of an understanding, because I, you know, I'm just looking at that real quick and making assessment is. That they don't know what they're doing with their money.
Yes.
Or they promised us that they were gonna decrease their budget.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah, it's not a good.
It's, it creates perceptions and, you know, because there's one, too many pages on it. Because that's what's required, you know, when you look at the support services as an expense, we're going from. And I'll give these numbers as best I can read them, sixteen, you know, million down to less than fifteen to less than fourteen. You know, we all know that expenses, you know, go down each year. Um, that's been my experience, yeah. Um, you know, but that's what you have to do in order to maintain that positive, so in that light, this is probably better than showing some crazy negative number that doesn't make any sense. Um, but I think somehow, just like we went from the F one ninety five, which, you know. Bless your heart, you understand, and you can go through there and make a lot of sense out of it. But if that was what we were trying to sell the levy on, we wouldn't stand a, you know, a chance. But the citizens' budget makes it simpler, so it's somehow getting us into a format that the public can easily understand. Quite a task, just because there's so much.
Well, it's, you know, it's not a bad idea um to do a citizens' version. The problem is, I don't think it's a realistic or useful tool.
Yeah.
At all.
Right.
Right, so I mean, we could do a citizens'. Version of the forecast. Um, I don't know if that would. Help us or not.
Could there be a narrative? That. Okay, like for this second.
okay, like for this segment? From the asterisk and down the bottom of a bit of information about why it looks like it looks and
We could put a, we could put a descriptor on it on the website, we could put it right on the above the link.
Yeah.
That explains what the stocking is and what it's, what it is.
I think we can do that where it gets a little wonky and it at least gives an explanation of what what's being looked at.
Yeah.
So like last year, we did it. If we continued status quo, and there's a hole we find ourselves in, and then this one is what do we have to do to get to that target of 4%? What's the plot where it kind of shows you the hurricane is going to hit somewhere along here? It kind, is it kind of like that, where it's giving, we gave the one range of this is how far we're in the fall, and then we have the other range of this is what we have to do to get to our 4%?
Kind of. I mean, it's, yeah, really, but it's based on years worth of assumptions. I mean, you're layering. You're making estimates based on estimates.
And last year, we made an assumption going one way, let's show how bad it can be. And this year, we're making an assumption saying, let's
Yeah, if we keep it within
The target of 4%.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's the struggle that I have with it. I don't think it's particularly informative or useful. I understand the intent. Well, I understand the original intent was good, right? It was a vehicle to express to the the lawmakers that we kind of it just happened to stick. So it's, you know, it's a tool for having a conversation around, you know, financial future, making good decisions about you know, managing our finances going forward, but yeah, it causes a whole separate set of issues because it's not a particularly helpful tool.
Well, it's like you said in the past, when it was going to those crazy negative numbers, you know, no financial administration, no board is going to do that. They're going to have to make adjustments. It's how to, how to get that message across, you know, so again, intent is good, it's just how can we do it?
It seems like presenting it in a consistent way from year to year. But then again, last year, I think we really needed to show this is the road we're on.
Yeah, because if you're bouncing, you know, then people are like, it does become like
Why was it so dire last year when this looks great?
It becomes a shell, the feel is it's a shell game, we're just showing us numbers to, you know, tweak our emotions.
And this unfortunately is one of those that can make it basically go however you want it to go.
Oh, yeah, you can.
So from open to suggestions or ideas or input on that.
So we can only submit it one way, right?
Right. Yeah, we can do different models, but we have to, we can only submit it as part of the actual budget one way. So levy, if we're ready to transition. Transition?
Yeah.
Okay, so you asked me a series of questions. I've got some answers. And a tiny little spreadsheet. And I will put it up on the deal. So the, again, the left-hand column is, numbers don't 100% exactly match. This is OSPI's forecast tool. And basically, the left-hand side is the is the 2022 levy assumptions. And again, calendar year, right? So this is the top part of this is is about the actual, the actual calendar year. So the max per pupil, formerly the 1,500, then bumped to the 2,500. That number is adjusted for inflation every year. So that 266339 used to be 2,500. Okay, so when we talk about the 250 per thousand of assessed value or the 2,500 per pupil, that's the, that's the number. So those top two lines are the max per pupil, the max tax rate. The, in order to qualify for local effort assistance, the next two lines down, that's the the dollar 50 and the what the is at the used to be the 1,500 is now 651. We don't qualify for local effort assistance, so we can ignore that that section. And then the CPI, the cost index that they're using for inflation is the is the percentage across there, and they're assuming that the the growth in AB, so and if you, the the I, the assessed value, is the is the important number down there on the bottom, so 6.3 billion, 7 billion. And then the enrollment number is on G1A. And actually, in in for 2022, we get to use 2019's enrollment number as a whole harmless. That was a one-time, one-time deal adjustment for COVID. So then again, you've got your enrollment forecast moving forward on on G1A. So those are the inputs, those are kind of the calculations. So and remember, the the rules are, you get to pick the lesser of whatever generates the least money, either the tax rate, the 250 per thousand of assessed value or the dollars per pupil. So since we're talking about 23 and 24, we're looking at those two columns. So $2,700 per pupil or 250 per thousand of assessed value. And if you scroll down, it's on your page, I guess you'd have to scroll. But if you look at K, the max levy rate per tax rate, that generates 17.5 million dollars in levy.
That's the 250.
That's the 250. The levy per pupil generates 11,700. Right? So that's our number. So we're actually looking at the dollar amount per pupil as our max. And that was one of the questions. That's actually three of the questions you asked last time. So you asked, what's the threshold at the top? Right? So 17.5 million dollars if you're looking at the at the 250 per pupil or 11.7 if you're looking at the excuse me, the the 11.7 if you're looking at the at the dollars per pupil or 17.50 if you're looking at at 250 per thousand. That's one of the reasons, yeah.
So if we, if we put out a levy to the people at 250 and they approve it, the maximum we could collect is still the 11.7.
Correct.
Can we even put 250 out there?
You could ask for it.
You can ask for anything.
You could ask for 100 now. So, you know, and and remember, and this is, this is so even though this has changed in terms of the of the the way this is presented and the way it's talked about and calculated, on the actual resolution, the the dollar amount is still what the voters are approving. So they're still approving a maximum dollar amount that you're able to collect. And then our authority is driven based on this formula.
So so if my calculations are right, you know, based on these numbers, the most that we would be able to ask for, again, assuming the numbers are right, because there's, it would be like 167. A dollar 67.
Yeah. Yeah. So and that's, so yes. So the the one of the next questions then, and that's why you'll see 10,500 within there, is what does, how much does a dollar 50 generate? Right? That's 10,500. So, yeah, because you're you're way under, your, your your tax rate generates too much money, right? Because the assessed value is so high.
So in that sense, there there's a gamble of if you put forth 250 of your assessed value limits or whatever, then you've got a, you've got a
You've got some reserve.
Yeah.
But putting out 250, knowing that you could only collect a dollar 67 is setting yourself up for
Yes.
failing.
And the property value is not going to come that far in two years.
Yeah. Well, it's, 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 it gets into the kind of interesting question of, okay, are you, are we still talking tax rate? Right? Or are we talking about dollar per pupil or are we talking about just a fixed dollar amount? Right? Because we used to campaign, we used to talk about, we're, you know, asking for 10 million the first year and 11 million the second year. Yeah, because we were $15 million in was the voter approved amount, so we're $15 million. And that's the way it was presented, was the was the dollar. And then when the the rate kind of came out, when we were campaigning for the bond, which we started talking about the tax rates and now have been locked into that for a while. So yeah, I mean, it's a really good question, but it gets down a little bit to how are you going to, just to talk about it.
I think people, at least in the last couple of elections, it felt to me that they've been, and maybe it's how we've presented it, it's been very me-centered, me-centered to the voters, how much am I going to be paying, not how much are we going to be giving to the schools?
Yeah.
And so thinking about that, do are people so entrenched in thinking about how much it's going to affect them? Or do we present it in a way of how much this is going to affect our students? In that case, you're asking for the dollar amount for the students. And we all split it and share.
So
But it's based on what your properties were.
Zip it down to the to the bottom. Because that, everything up above there was, it was basically the the calendar year, right, the the tax year. We get down to the bottom, and we break it into school year. So we start looking at, okay, our 10, 10,500,000 actually turns into 9.6 million for the school year because we're splitting. Right? So if you look at the the division up here, you're collecting basically 52.6% of the 22 in the spring and then 47% in the in the fall. So the interesting I found it interesting. I don't know, maybe it was stupidly using, I don't know. So if we take our our levy estimate from the F-195F, so the highlight green numbers were these two numbers right here. The difference between this number and that number is actually 1.2 million. Whereas the on the our deficit from the F-195F was 2.4. And if you do that same exercise here, it's it's basically our, we're 2.5 and 1.2, so we basically reverse these in terms of the of the deficit. So over the course of the two years, we balance at the dollar 50. So the dollar 50 tax rate based on the assessed value assumption of 10 and 1/2 million and 11 and 1/2 million basically washed with our financial assumptions from the F-195F. You wouldn't need to make that reduction. You basically would stay flat with where you're currently at. You backfill the the revenue deficit. If that made sense. I mean, it was a little bit of an aha moment when I was doing that. That worked out pretty cool. So the other questions that you asked was, okay, how much does Dr. generate for 11.5? Does a dollar 50 maintain status quo? Yes. It does, with the assumption that we're using the the fund balance this year. Can we get by on a dollar 50 for two years? And the answer to that is yes as well. I mean, it maintains very, very stable. The third year, obviously, then, you know, you're all of a sudden, you're getting ready for ESSR to go away. You're back into, depending on that, it's assuming you run a two-year levy to your background cycle with the rest of the Washington County districts. So then you're looking at something different, year three. But in terms of where we're at financially now, you could definitely, you could bridge that gap for two years on on a dollar 50.
Well, and and would that you know, looking at what our fund balance has done over the course of the last year, just because of COVID craziness, looking at all that ESSR money coming in, who's the general public? Does it make more sense to be asking for the dollar 50 and garnering some hopefully some trust in them, in the community, that we're not asking for the sky? You know, we're recognizing this and being trying to be responsive that way to potentially when that ESSR money does go away, you need to ask for more. You know, being able to do that.
And if we bring down our fund balance in that same time, then we won't get people saying, well, look, you've got a pile of gold over there.
Yeah. And it can, and it can showing our responsibility in the sense of, I think Linda pointed out or made a good point of, you know, showing the public what we've done responsibly with the bond. You know, because that's, you start looking at that number, that's a significant difference in 16 years versus 20 and the interest rate that was predicted versus what we've been able to get.
Actually, how we're using the ESSR with the MTS essence, and by that time, we'll have data showing that success of it. And that's something more of a, when it goes away, although it's a one-time thing, but that's the sword of things that would be a materials operations type of
In regards to the budget presentation, we've kind of merged our last two items into one point of conversation. And are there other budget pieces that we need to look at? So we're really sort of done with that. So
Sorry.
That's okay. When when you were talking about transitioning to the side, I think we're going to take a similar whole conversation about that. Just a couple reminders on the budget. We have to pass a balanced budget by August 31st. So we have to be able to move forward with that budget. The plan right now is to have public hearings, which were required to have on Tuesday night prior to our meeting, where people could come in and ask questions. And then we have, I guess, at that point, still two opportunities to approve a budget either on the 27th, or we have to make sure we approve it before the 31st, which I think
Is the night of your meeting. So we're hoping it can be, but
Yeah. So we just have to keep that in mind. So I didn't really lose sight of where we were and being able to circle back on the budget for Tuesday night. So the public hearing will be at 6:45 in this room, followed by our board meeting at 7:00.
Are you talking next week?
Next
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Whereas the timing for these levy conversations, I mean, I think legally, you have to if you want it to be on the February, I mean, the decisions you have to make are rate, duration, and time of the election. I think you've been talking in terms of the February election. I think the date, the official date is in December, isn't it, for the resolution for that? But I need to tell you that I think you need to make a decision before that to be able to run an information campaign.
Sure.
Yeah. So I I'm thinking that by the time school starts, it would be nice, you know, in the in the early fall.
Can we not be all in November?
No, it has to be in the calendar year preceding.
Well, and and it would be nice to have, you know, in my mind, particularly seeing these numbers, it it puts it, and again, that's just in my mind, puts it less of a this number versus this number. I mean, I've got a feeling, but it'd be nice to kind of get I mean, I've got a feeling, but it'd be nice to kind of get this conversation out of the way, so we have the levy figured out. Because when we start hitting September, October, then we're going to hit more stuff as far as superintendent certain, you know, one less thing on the table if we can get a decision made.
So so, and so one of the options too is to do something slightly in between one fifteen and go to one seventy five, I mean, you know, that's another option as well. And I would, I probably wouldn't go all the way to two fifty. You know, but I, but anyway, I think, and you know, I started bringing Selena Rodriguez on board. The new communications person, but I've told her that she'll have a role in the levy and start thinking about messaging, and that made me think that you're just going to want to be able to start talking about the levy in September. So, so so, but, but as Andrew said, the sequence is you've got to get a balanced budget passed. There's the budget hearing, all of that. And then, but they, the budget definitely has implications for what we do.
So not to leave the levy conversation, but just to deviate back for a minute. Will we see the budget next week with these changes in it? Be able to everyone has a comfortable with it, whether or not we can.
Yes.
So, so Andrew, what we've, you know, I think for the last I don't, I think in, in twelve years, maybe there's two, two comments made.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
But what we've generally done, but this might, year might be different. But what we've generally done is if nobody shows up, Mark goes ahead and does the budget presentation in the, in the, during the hearing, and then doesn't repeat it.
Sure.
If there's a lineup of people to make comments. And it's been posted now.
So we can try, I'll try to be here at six forty five, possibly hear the presentation. I'll shorten the seven to whatever time.
If, if it follows the pattern.
Yeah.
That has been.
So with that understanding, then we can step back into our discussion with levy, we all know the timeframes now that we we have to, to look for. I don't think we were planning to make any decisions tonight, just certainly hopefully laying out what, what our options are and how to message the use of Esther funds against this current levy, and then in a way they, they buy us a little bit of time at a lower level.
So maybe, maybe the right timing is to return to this, that you're August, if the budget passes in July. Pass about balance budget, explain Esther, like get some word out about Esther, what that means, I know, I don't think. Well, maybe by the August, we won't know the bond rate. They, aren't they talking, aren't they talking so much, so we won't know that. But we, we can predict, we, we'll know by August, the end of August, if the rates are still good. You know, we can predict that, and so by August, maybe that's when you either August or September study session, special journey, to actually make the decision about the are we all agreed that February is when we should do?
Yeah, I think so.
We saw what happened, you know, so you really have to decide rate or amount, however, whether it's going to be a rate or a month and with duration. Year levy, you know how fast they come around again. The only advantage is to get back on schedule, and that might be a big enough advantage to do it. With the other six Washington County's school districts. Especially if you're going to go for a dollar fifty again.
Other thoughts or comments to share on the, on the levy rather? Well, I, I would like to say personally, thank you, Mark, for the presentation and all the work that's gone into this, and Linda and the exec team too, because you guys have guided us through a difficult year and come out on the other side with a really strong plan, I think, to move us to the next level and, and next steps, and so we really appreciate that. I know it will be a lot of work to incorporate these changes, but those changes will influence in lots of ways.
For sure.
All right, well, then we cover item
Yeah.
four point oh one and four point oh two. So this point we're going to move into executive sessions for about forty five minutes to discuss the contract of an employee, no action will be taken during this executive session. The board may or may not take action when they return to the open session. With that, we'll take just a minute or two break and we'll convene in the after in there, and John, can you be available if we have questions? We're going to meet first and then we may have some questions. I'll be right here.
Do you want all of us to stay?
I, I don't know that everybody needs to stay other than, we'll have the other group meeting.
I will stay.
Okay, I'll stay.
Why do I have two driver's license papers?
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Following our executive session, there are no actions or no items that we need to take action upon tonight. So unless there are any further points of discussion, I will adjourn the meeting. All right, beginning of our